Order trustee please come to order. Ms. Thompson, may we have the roll?
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Wa.
Here.
Dr. Mann.
Present.
Dr. Fellow.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Dr. Salvage.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Thank you. Ms. Cooper, please tell us what's on the agenda for our close session.
Thank you, President Brown. Tonight you have collective bargaining, PCC CFT, CSEA, POA, lead negotiator, myself, Government Code Section 54957.6, negotiation with unrepresented employees, both management association and confidential, designated negotiator, Dr. Miller, Government Code Section 54957.9A, and two public employee appointments, dean of student life, and coordinator teaching and learning center, Government Code Section 54957.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the board? Seeing there is none, we will recess to close session. Thank you. Ms. Cooper, please tell us what transpired in close session?
There was no reportable action in close session.
Thank you so very much. Okay, trustee Wa, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, justice for all.
Thank you, trustee Wa. And I would like to welcome you to our meeting for tonight. Today is March the 18th. So we are going to proceed with our recognitions. Do we have any recognitions?
Not tonight.
Okay, no recognitions, very good. Okay, so let's move on to the approve -- okay, no, not approval. We're going to use -- go to public comments.
I have one person who wished to make a public comment, not on the agenda, Martin Enrique Marquez.
So just to remind you that you have three minutes. Thank you.
I am Martin Enrique Marquez. Good evening trustees and assembled persons. It is a privilege to address such an august body. I first spoke to you 32 years ago. Before I begin my remarks about redistricting, I would like to compliment you, trustee Brown for being president, Lynda Wa, and Dr. Mann for being the first executive board to be all female. I think it should be commented upon, and blessings to you and yours.
We need it. All right.
I wish to just comment that on July 28, 2014, I sent the entire Board of Trustees a copy of a trustee area that had a supermajority of Chicano, Hispanic, Indigenous, Latino, Latino individuals, and also a supermajority by voting age population. I think it's in conformance with the 14th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America, and with recent Supreme Court rulings, including Barlet versus Strickland, League of United Latin American Citizens versus Perry, also Thunberg versus Gins -- Jingles, and most importantly, here locally, Garza versus Los Angeles County. I would just like to add those to the record, and feel as I addressed the visiting team of accreditation, that the district has been in violation of the Voting Rights Act of 1965. So far, my research indicates it is --
You have one more minute.
-- is it as recently as 1980 that a majority district could have been made. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next is the approval of our minutes. Do I have a motion for approval?
Will do approve.
Second?
We have a first from trustee Wa, and a second from trustee Mann.
I have a correction.
We have a correction.
Yes, on the open session item, I'm designated both as being voting for something and also being absent.
That takes a lot of talent.
And, yeah, and I think there was also another correction. I think trustee, trustee Fellow, I think that's who the one was absent, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so other than those corrections, any other? Go ahead, trustee.
Aye.
Good, and all in favor with -- we should have one abstention, right? Trustee Fellow, you were not here last, right? Right? So that's one abst --
You're always both to approve, but I'll abstain.
Approved, aye, aye.
Okay, all right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Abstention?
Abstain.
One abstention, and all in favor, it's six, I guess it's seven of us. Okay, motion carries. All right, let's move to approval of consent items. Do we have any consent item that you want to pull?
Yes.
Go ahead, trustee Thompson.
Number 165B.
Any other consent items? We do have a few revisions. Which ones were there?
168. So 165B, 174B.
Okay, so 164B has been revised, and it's in your little folder, and 165B also is revised. Did you see that, trustee Thompson?
I don't see 164B.
174B.
170, I'm sorry, 174B, I'm sorry. So the revision is in the folder.
Red folder.
So we will remove?
I know, well, I, all I have is 91 and 92P. There we go.
Got it?
This one?
Okay, so let's pull it and have you look at it, and then we will vote on the ones that are there. So with the exception of 165B.
Okay.
Okay, you okay with that?
That, yeah, that was my question.
Okay, great.
Possibly us or getting the money, one of the two.
Exactly right.
Okay, great, so we're all in one accord. Okay, so, any other questions? If not, do we have a motion? Motion by trustee Wa. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, by trustee Lewis. Okay, it's time to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carries unanimously.
President Brown, you should announce for items 91P and 92P, you should announce who our new employees are.
Oh, thank you so very much. So items, items 94, you said, what?
91P and 92P.
91 is the appointment of a classified administration, and 92P is the appointment of an academic employee. Thank you.
The names.
Yes, so let me, if I may, President Brown.
Sure.
The appointment is of a dean of student life in the student affairs area, and it's Ms. Rebecca Cobb.
Oh.
And we have a teaching learning center coordinator, classified management position, and that is Mr. Carlos Altamirano, and I believe Mr. Altamirano is in the audience, and we want to congratulate him for this.
Congratulations.
Mr. Altamirano has been a longtime district employee and has worked his way up through our ranks, and recently a master's degree from the University of Southern California, and also a proud Marine veteran.
Ra.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Altamirano. Okay, so if it's okay with the board, I am going to pulled item, actually move up item L, because we have some students that we would like to go back to their studies. So if they will come up at this time, we'll undo their presentation, we'll appreciate that.
And if I may, this is Dean Amy Olmer, who's the dean of our humanities and social sciences school. With her is Mr. Manny Perea, who is a member of the English faculty and also the secretary of the, the treasurer of the academic senate. And we also have in the audience, Mr. Dustin, or Dr. Dustin Hanvey, who will also participate with his students.
We're going to bring the students up in just a moment, okay? And I'm very excited about Rebecca Cobb and Carlos, this is Tito, this is terrific. Good evening, President Brown, Dr. Miller, and members of the Board of Trustees. Thank you for allowing the School of Humanities and Social Sciences to take a few moments of your time to showcase a sampling of the many activities, outstanding activities and events with which students, faculty, staff, and the community are involved. As Dr. Miller pointed out, Professor Perea is with me, and Professor Hanvey will be coming up in a moment, and they will speak briefly also. In your board packet, you have a selection of flyers that highlight our events. You don't need to take a look at them now, but they will give you more details on what I'm about to tell you. The first flyer is about the Pasadena Festival Women Authors, an annual March event whose proceeds benefit the Pasadena Senior Center. A few years ago, thanks to PCC Foundation Board Member Lonnie Shields, the festival committee members came to me to discuss a way they could contribute to the English Department. That discussion led to the founding of the PCC Annual Writer-in-Residence Program, entering its fourth year of bringing noted female authors to PCC each October. A few weeks ago, I attended the festival and accepted a check on behalf of the English Department. The relationship works both ways. The festival and the senior center gives us money for the program, and our writer-in-residence provides writing workshops for the senior center during her visit at PCC. I'm going to ask Professor Perea to tell you a little bit more about the program.
Thank you. So as Dean Olmer mentioned, in 2002, we received a generous grant from the Pasadena Festival of Women Authors, and we were able to inaugurate our writer-in-residence program. The goal of the program was to enrich the cultural environment of PCC and the larger community by bringing to campus for a period of three days a distinguished local writer to interact with students and faculty, staff, and community members. The writer-in-residence events include visits to our creative writing classrooms, writing workshops, a faculty luncheon, and a public reading. Writers-in-residence are interviewed by editors of PCC's literary magazine, Inscape, and the interview appears, it will be published in the magazine for that year. And the residency also offers our visiting writers an opportunity to promote a recent publication. So we, when we choose a writer, one of our criteria is that they have a book coming out or recently published. And our past celebrated writers have included, we began actually with a former PCC student and National Book Critics Circle Award finalist, Reina Grande, and we followed her with a crime novelist and Edgar Award winner Denise Hamilton, and most recently, the Margaret Edwards Awards winner and longtime Los Angeles favorite author Francesca Leablock. We are currently making our selection for our next writer-in-residence. All of these writers, or two of these writers, were honored by the Festival of Women Authors and presented at their annual event, as Dean Olmer mentioned. And we really couldn't present our program if it weren't for the festival. To this date, they have donated more than $15,000 to our program. Additional funding comes from several groups on campus, including the Office of Student Affairs and the English Department. And as I mentioned, we're currently selecting our new writer-in-residence for our program, which will take place in October of next year, and we're looking forward to another successful year.
And I forgot to mention that Professor Perea coordinates the actual writer-in-residence program with assistance from other English faculty. So thank you, Manny. Also in your packet are other events, including a presentation this coming Tuesday by Los Angeles Times journalist David Pearson on his experiences while reporting from China. He lives in the San Gabriel Valley, and he connects the Chinese experience to what happens here in our area. This event is sponsored by the USC PCC Partnership Grant, which is in cooperation with our Chinese language program. Next, on April 2nd, this is in chronological order, is the Annual Borders of Diversity Student-Led Conference, an all-day event that showcases the ideas and works of our students and provides a forum for a diversity of expression from a diverse group of students. Then, on April 16th, in case you have nothing else to do, the English Department will host the Second Annual PCC Poetry Celebration, which will bring professional and student poets together to share their craft. On that same day, but in the evening, there will be a panel discussion celebrating the life and work of August Wilson as part of the Jackie Robinson Arts and Humanities series. So all of these programs are within the School of Humanities and Social Sciences, but from different areas. As you can see, there's a lot happening outside the classroom in this school. Finally, I want to ask Professor Dustin Hanvey to come to the podium with his students and tell you about his exciting trip to Washington DC over spring break with students from our Stretch Accelerated Composition Class, also known as STACK, which is a program which is designed to move students to course completion in English 1A and move them on to transfer.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. It's my pleasure to be here on probably one of the most proud moments of my entire career. You have to forgive me in advance if I'm a little emotional, because this event means a lot to me. I'm here representing STACK, as Dean Olmer just mentioned, and I thank her for helping me have the time to speak to you tonight. I'd like to give credit to the many faculty members of my division that put together this particular program, Elsie Rivas Gomez and Kirsten Augen especially, who helped lead it and create it along with Nika Hogan. If you don't know already, our STACK program is our one-year English composition program that takes 1A and stretches it into two semesters. And last year, I was very proud to join this program, and last summer, I was thinking, I have these students for an entire year, I'm going to get to know them really well, they're going to get to know me very well, and it's really important for STACK to build a community inside the classroom. And one of the texts for our class was Aaron Gruel's text called Freedom Riders. If you've seen the film starring Hilary Swank, that was based on her experiences. She was a high school English teacher, teaching students that were marked by the district as likely to drop out. And what inspired me when I was reading her story and her students' stories was every single member of her class graduated from high school, and many went on to become successful in the community and graduate from college as well. And so I thought, how can I apply what Ms. Gruel did in her classroom to my own? And so we applied a lot of her techniques in fall, we did a toast for change, we wrote letters to Judy Chu, we wrote letters to the president who did respond, we went to the Museum of Tolerance, and our ultimate dream as a class was to take a trip to Washington DC. It started out as a dream, it started out as an idea. One member of my class who isn't here tonight, we watched the "I Have a Dream" speech as part of our lesson, and he said, "We're going to stand right there." And I'll get back to that a little later. So with help of Bobby Abram, who's right behind, she came and visited my class, and we talked about fundraising, and my students did it, unspenanced to me in many cases. And so, it started out with 30, 19 ended up going to DC, through a lot of very great miracles on the day that we needed to get our flight together, everybody came with their money. And so last week, 19 of us went to Washington DC, and we did a lot of different things when we were there. We actually met in Judy Chu's office, we went to the White House, we went to tour of Congress, we went to the Holocaust Museum, and as Javier, my student, said, we stood exactly where Dr. King spoke and took a picture, which I hope to pass along eventually to everybody, since they can see. That's probably enough for me, I'd really like you to hear from my students, these are amazing students, they inspire me, they really made my life just, just very, very positive this last year, and I think this program is amazing. And so I'm going to let them come up, I think Roxanne's going to speak first? So Roxana Choa first, please.
Hi, good evening. I'm Roxana Choa, and I'm a kinesiology major. And to be honest, I don't really know what to talk about, but maybe I could start with the reason why I went to this trip. And at first, I thought the reason why I went was because I just wanted something new, since I've only been here in the country for two years. And I think this is the great, I thought that this is the great, the big opportunity to do that, but halfway the trip, I realized that it was something more to that, there is something more to that, that it was so fulfilling, that when I got back here to LA, I thought about it, and I found out the real reason why. And the real reason why I went to this trip is because I knew deep down inside me that I was going with my family. This trip was so amazing and tiring. It was full of walking, and at the end of the day, I just wanted to go back to the hotel and sleep and regain the, the energy that I lost, but the big butt for the trip was just, I had so much fun. I knew that I had fun, because I forgot that I have a phone to check my social media accounts on, like a normal teenager would do. And for this trip, it made me realize that I want to try to be a better person. It wasn't the, the Washington Monument, or the Lincoln Memorial, or the White House even, that affected me, it was the Holocaust Museum. When I saw what the Jews went through, especially the kids, it made me realize that after, after seeing that, that I couldn't smile, I couldn't smile for five to 10 minutes, just because it was so sad, it was so moving. My favorite part was, was the shoes. They were, there were shoes that the Jews wore when they were in the concentration camps, and when I saw that, I felt like something and, or someone really pinched my heart, because it was really moving. And I mentioned that I felt like I was with my family, and I was, and I really was, and I meant every word. Because when I took this class, I thought it was just for credit, but as I go along, and as I got closer with the people in my class, and even the, and even the people from the other class when we took the trip together, I realized that this has been my family since I started here in PCC, and it was so amazing. And when I was interviewed for The Pulse by Mr. Rivera, I told him that I want to have the same feeling that the Freedom Riders did when they went to DC. At first, I didn't know what they felt, because I only read it in the book, and I only saw it in the movie, and now I do. I know it's 100% real, I know it's true, because the feeling is priceless. Thank you. And the next person who's going to share his experience is Aaron.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, I'm going to try and keep this brief. So the Washington trip was actually, it was amazing, I really enjoyed it. This is my first time to actually be a part of the STACK program, it's 1A class, and I thought, you know what, Dustin, Professor Hanvey has, I'm sorry, Professor Hanvey has very good ratings on RateMyProfessor.com, why don't I take him? So I did, and little did I know that he was actually planning a trip, and I thought, I'd go ahead and take on this opportunity, because when can I get it again? So when I was there, what, what struck me was that there, I was actually, you know, with all the buildings and all the landmarks that there were to observe and see, there were so, there was so much history behind everything, you know? I got to see, you know, the Washington Monument, the Lincoln Memorial, you got to see buildings of like, the departments of everything involved in the government, you got to see the IRS and the EPA, just everything. But with my deep vested interest in economics, one of the buildings that I really took time to appreciate was the Federal Reserve, which is, you know, that's not actually a part of the government, but they kind of guise themselves as a part of the government, which is pretty cool. But, so, I really, I stood there, and I realized how many people didn't realize what the building they were walking by was. It was our national bank, it's the place that makes our money. They didn't realize that, but I thought it was pretty cool. There were so many other things that I enjoyed about this trip, but I thought that, you know, that experience stood out to me, and I am very appreciative of Professor Hanvey putting this trip together. I think other professors should encourage, you know, students to reach success in however they, however else that they can, whatever it may be, whether it be, you know, a simple field trip to somewhere else in LA, or if they want to take an international trip to Europe. I don't know that that's what professor's goal is ultimately, to try and go and visit a landmark in Europe, but I'm very happy that he decided to go on this trip, and without him, you know, it obviously wouldn't have happened, and as a first timer, it came as a surprise to me, but it went through, and it's a pleasant surprise. With that, thank you very much, I'm going to go ahead and introduce the next speaker, who's Farima.
Good evening, everybody. It is my pleasure to be here tonight, and I am Farima Homayun, and I'm a political science major. Well, the reason I decided to go to the DC trip is because I actually like traveling. I, I can never say no to, to traveling, and I was actually born in Afghanistan, and I lived 12 years in Russia, and seven years in Lithuania. I have traveled over 14 countries, such as India, Pakistan, Tajikistan, Turkmenistan, Latvia, Lithuania, Poland, Finland, Germany, United States, oh my God, I can't even remember a lot of countries, but every person who knew me and who knows me, they always ask me, where do you, what country you like mostly, and where do you, do you really want to live in, after traveling so much? And I never had an answer. And after going to the Washington DC, I realized that this is the city I want to live in. I like the architectural buildings, people with formal clothing, it's just a city that most important issues happens in the world, and I just want to live there. And I'm, I'm so glad that I have this answer now for people. And this was amazing. We went to the Congresswoman Judy Chu's office, eight students, and we actually spoke to the Congresswoman Judy Chu's assistant, and it was amazing to share my own story when I went to Afghanistan, and I was held against my will for two years. And I'm actually planning to write a book, and hopefully to have a mentor to help me, because my English is not that advanced for, to write books, but I'm going to write probably in Russian, and then translate, and then, I don't know, I have to plan this, but hopefully I can make it, and I can share it with you one day. I'm really thankful to Dr. Hanvey that he takes his time to take students to Washington DC, or like he said to us, that he's planning to take students every single year, and this is an amazing idea, and this is, really helps students, and I will, I personally will help him with anything if is needed or I can do. And that would be amazing if the Board of Trustees will always support him with this, because this is life-changing opportunities. I'm just going to stop here, thank you so much, and I'll invite Dr. Hanvey back today.
Okay, I'll close by, I forgot to mention that this was completely self-funded, we raised our own money, and these students came together, and my only hope now is that I can share this experience with future students, because as you just heard, I mean, this was an amazing experience for them and for me. And one thing I'll close with is that, one thing that's taught me is that my students are human beings with really well-rounded, complicated lives, and we got to know each other very well during our time there, and so I just hope I can share this experience with more students in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let's see, do we have any comments? Go ahead, trustee Martin.
I want, I don't want to speak for Professor Pereira in the back, but I'd like to get an early commitment for a future writer-in-residence when the book gets written, and, so if we can get that commitment now, that's all, I'd just like to get the commitment early, and we'll schedule it, and he'll take care of it, but that sounds wonderful.
Okay, trustee Wa.
You're in, John.
Yeah, it's always a pleasure to see Dr. Hanvey, and you know, it's really great, his face just lights up when he talks about his students, and what a great group of students. And truly, this is an example of how we build leadership within our students in here, on this, in this college. Thank you to Dean Olmer and also Professor Pereira for having sponsored and supported this and helped Dr. Hanvey. I know one of their hopes that you had was to be able to visit with Congresswoman Chu, but she was out of her office when you went to DC, but I wanted to, I know Dr. Miller and Dr. Corner would always be happy to facilitate that meeting if you still so desired, but many of the board members here have a pretty good relationship and are in communication with that office, so we'd be happy to help. But kudos to you all, what a great group, and this is certainly what we talk about when we talk about building a global workforce in the college for the 21st century, great examples of our leaders.
Dr. Miller?
No matter what else happens tonight, this is a great board meeting. It brings, it brings chills to me to hear the absolute incredible things that are happening, and I often say, miracles happen every day, and Dr. Hanvey and Dean Olmer and Professor Perea and all the English faculty created some miracles with this, with this event. And, and it's just faculty, you know, it's just incredible, and you know, it just proves again, there's no nobler position, or there's no nobler career in one's life than to be that of a teacher, and, and that's what this institution's all about. So I just wanted to thank Dr. Hanvey, you've gone on to bigger and better things, Dr. Hanvey, and we all truly, truly appreciate you, and certainly these great students, and everything that Dean Olmer and that vision does. And with that, last thing, I want to say that I went by the English area office today, and I took a picture of a poster, and it's the 2015 API Asian Pacific Islander Visiting Scholar, Priscilla Hervey, who's going to be on campus in, on March 26, 11:45 to 1:15 here. Scholar Priscilla Hervey, who's going to be on campus on March 26, 11:45 to 1:15 here in Creveling. And she, I believe, was the producer or filmmaker of the film Black Tiger Hunter Hunted, and it's going to be screened here. And so, that's a combination of the API event and also the School of Humanities and Social Sciences. I just want to plug in for that.
And before you leave, I would like to thank you. And the reason I'm so grateful is because we have been asking as a board to learn and to get presentations of what is going on in the different departments. I think this showcase gave us an opportunity that good things are happening for our students, and we do have some excellent teachers and professors and counselors here at PCC, and I am just excited, I appreciate it. Anyone else? No? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we will move to our action items, and we will begin with our commencement speaker. Dr. Miller?
Yes, thank you. So, in your board packets, board agenda item F, and in your notebooks, under tab F, is a recommendation by myself, supported by Dr. Bell, Dr. Levo, and the committee that made, put this recommendation together. And it is a recommendation to select Chad Crittenden as the 2015 commencement speaker. And if I may, I'll just read very briefly Mr. Crittenden's bio. Mr. Crittenden worked at a local community college before pursuing studies at the University of California Davis, majoring in international relations with an emphasis on world resources, the environment, and Spanish. In 2002, Crittenden was diagnosed with synovial sarcoma, a rare and deadly cancer. Amputation was necessary just below the knee. His recovery was miraculously quick. He completed a triathlon nine months after the surgery. Challenge Athletes Foundation sponsored Chad for triathlons, which he's been doing ever since. He's been involved with adaptive action sports, which helps amputees compete in snowboarding. In 2007, AAS brought a group of advanced snowboarders, amputees, to Windell Snowboard Camp at Mount Hood. Chad completed the New York City Marathon in 2009, and in 2012 reached the summit of Kilimanjaro as part of the CA, the CAFRICA Expedition, which raised over $140,000 for the Challenge Athletes Foundation. Crittenden has been cancer-free for over 10 years. So, in brief, the committee was moved by this, felt that he would in fact be an excellent commencement speaker for our 2014-15 graduates. So, I bring this recommendation to you. Dr. Bell and others are here to respond to any questions, should the board have any?
Okay, any discussion, any questions? I think that's an exemplary person to come and inspire our student, what a testimony. So, yes, trustee Mann?
Approval of the 2015 commencement speaker?
Okay, we have.
Second.
Motion has been moved by Dr. Mann and second by trustee Lewis. So, any other discussion? If not, trustee Lewis?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Motion carry unanimously. Oh, that was quick. All right, let's move on to adoption of 215-216 calendar.
There's, I have speaker wishes to speak to this topic.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Okay, Christine Pylon?
Good evening, board members. Pasadena City College has recently endured a long anticipated visit by the ACCJC accrediting team. As we are all aware, one of the areas that will likely cause us some trouble in the final report is the ongoing lack of mutual cooperation in shared governance decisions. Board members, you have an opportunity tonight to show the ACCJC that shared governance is alive and respected at PCC. All major campus constituent bodies have approved the return of this college to a calendar with winter intercession. All available pedagogical evidence, which has been provided to you by the faculty, supports a winter intercession. No data shows that any group was adversely affected by winter, and Office of Institutional Effectiveness data showed clear gains to student success just before winter was removed. There is no impediment to putting this schedule into effect now. As administrative representatives Olivo and Bell indicated at the last Kappa meeting, the scheduling, state notifications for financial aid and veterans' issues could still be addressed at this point in time. The argument that winter poses more operational inefficiencies than a second summer session is ridiculous. And until class cuts were made by administration, winter had higher enrollments than the second summer session has ever had. Tonight, you should vote to approve the PCC schedule with winter, as college constituent groups have overwhelmingly and consistently requested. Show the ACCJC that you value and trust the input of your colleagues on this campus. Your failure to heed shared governance will only prolong the present pattern of violation. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only speaker?
That's the only two speakers cards that I have.
Okay, go ahead, trustee Lewis.
Question. Professor Pallone?
Yes, I think.
You said that the research was provided to us? Did you mean something for this meeting?
It should have been provided.
Okay, so before, but not this meeting? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Miller?
Yes, thank you. So, item G in your packets is the adoption of 2015-16 academic calendar. And I want to be clear on this, that this is my recommendation that I put a lot of time and effort and thought into. I am incredibly respectful of Professor Pallone's comments, and certainly believe that as we go into the 16-17 year, there is some much greater reflection that we, as an institution, need to do in relation to a winter intercession. However, as a result of several items, which I point out in the board agenda item, it's my recommendation that we maintain the current calendar for 15-16 that we currently have for 14-15. Specifically, there are four reasons why I am doing that. One is the recently completed agreement between the PCCFA and the district relative to the Purb decision, which basically indicates that either party may reopen the topic, the negotiations on working conditions, once the Purb decision goes down. But for now, it was in agreement with the FA that we not move forward. Secondly, we want to wait for the conclusion of the selection of a new superintendent president so we don't get in front of her or his ideas in that relation, in relation to a calendar going forward. Third, the programming within our Banner, our administrative information system, is such that we are not prepared to have a winter intercession, and it would take considerable man-hours and consulting hours to try to pull that off on this short notice, and it would be an expensive endeavor as well. And then finally, the dispersment of financial aid and the impacts on those students who would be impacted by a calendar shift. In your packets, I won't go take the time to read now, but there is sort of a detailed report on each one of the items that I just referred to. So, certainly, the board members have had this for a few days, and we can talk about this tonight if you want, but, or I can go over the specifics of it. But you can see very specifically what the effects of the implementation of the calendar would have in our administrative information system, the specific impacts on students as a result of the financial aid situation, and the like. Those are the two primary things that required more input. And finally, I want to point out that indeed the calendar committee did vote to add a winter intercession. And I want to point out that indeed the college council did vote to add that winter intercession. So, I want everyone to know that this is my recommendation and not the recommendation of our shared governance groups, but I believe it's the appropriate thing to do this year. But again, next year, I think we need to look at it a little more closely.
Thank you. Go ahead, trustee Feller.
I agree with the president, and I thank you for this information, Dr. Miller. And I was going to make a motion to retain the current schedule.
Okay. Second?
That was quick. You have a question?
Discussion.
Go ahead, discuss.
Okay, so, as far as I understand it, I asked about this, the collective bargaining and the Purb decision. What I was told was, the agreement was not to, either party would not negotiate for the calendar. However, both parties, it was understood that they would allow shared governance to take its course. And that was directly from Julie Kiotis.
Right.
So, to me, that's not a very valid reason.
It's a chicken and egg situation, trustee Lewis, in that if we move forward with the shared governance recommendation without negotiating the impact on the working conditions, then we have a problem, and we have not, we've not done that. So, we have to, we have to negotiate the impact, well, we have to wait and see what the Purb decision says to know what it is we have to negotiate, if anything, and we go from there. So, it's very complicated, it's, but it is, it is kind of what it is.
Okay. Also, this, the last two, programming with Banner and impact on dispersments, these are things that are going to happen regardless if we do it now, or if we do it in 2016 or 2020, it doesn't matter. So, I also don't think these impact.
It's, I have two words for things like this, and they are orderly transition. In order for us to do this in an orderly way and not impact students, or in order for us to deal with the needs of the programming, to add a whole nother term to the system, we need to take our time and do it right. Last time, we didn't take our time and did it right, and it had massive implications. This time, we want to take our time. So, whomever the next superintendent president is, will likely take this up relatively quickly upon their appointment, and then begin to develop a well-researched recommendation that it can share. Because clearly, the constituency of the institution has spoken very loudly, they have done that for the last two, three years. So, it is time that we need to deal with this. It's just this year, we don't have enough time to deal with it effectively.
Okay, and I, just one more thing. I understand what you're saying, but I also think that this calendar issue only comes up around January, and if we continue on that path, every single time we talk about the calendar, it's going to be too late.
So, this board, well, let's put it this way. This board can indicate to the next superintendent president that they want this resolved by November 15th, and we would be in a position to do that. So, that's an option the board has. But I do believe whoever the next superintendent president is, and if it's not me, I will clearly inform that person that this is an issue that needs to be done, and obviously it may not be me. But the point is, is that whatever, it has to be dealt with. We're just not in a position to dealing with it this year, effectively.
Trustee Watt?
So, having sat through the last change on that calendar, I do recall the difficulty students had in getting their financial aid. So, you know, that to me was pretty compelling, so, but now, and I'm reading the recommendations that this would be impacted again without having all of the programming. So, being a programmer, I do understand that the difficulties in making sure that it gets tested through when you add in these additional sessions. But having heard from Professor Pallone that they were given, I guess, to believe that this is not a problem, was, did I mishear that, or is that?
What's not a problem?
The financial aid, or it could be up for discussion, or?
Well, the simple, one quick comment. We had to report to the US Department of Education by January 31st what our calendar was going to be. So, we reported that the calendar was not going to change. As a result of that, we cannot go backwards as far as when the US DOE would then provide funding to us to allocate to our students. So, what it would mean is a percentage of our winter students would not receive financial aid until sometime into the spring. There are 68% of our students, I believe is the current number, that are on some form of financial aid. So, that would have some sort of significant impact on them presumably, not all of them, obviously, but a percentage of them would be impacted. And, you know, and that would be a problem.
Thank you. Other questions? I have a comment. Go ahead, Dr. Mann. Yeah, I have a couple of things. First of all, I saw this discussion of financial aid, there was no mention of veterans.
Yes.
And I looked at the regulations, and if veterans have a break of 15 days.
Yes.
In the, but like, and they specifically said like, winter intercessions, spring intercessions, they lose their housing allowance. And I don't see how in winter session, if a veteran could continue full-time, and so, I think this is an issue that needs to be addressed. Secondly, I am very curious about this data that we're supposed to have received. I did not receive anything from the faculty this year, and the data that we received last time was, in my opinion, more of an attack on the administrations of data. I've never seen any data which shows that our students benefit from the winter intercession, and I have seen data from the chancellor's office which shows just the opposite. So, I am taking both those things into consideration in the way I vote on this.
Trustee Lewis?
Two things. The first thing, on the veterans' issue, that's not true. We don't get paid gap pay anymore, but that's years in the past. So, yes, after a gap, we don't get money for it, but that's going to be true no matter how you cut the calendar. There's going to be an amount of break, period, and during that break, we will not get paid, and it's because they took gap pay away, and we can't get a job for a week, or five days, or whatever these breaks are. Any break in the calendar will hurt us because we will not get paid. It doesn't matter where you put it.
I'm sorry, but that's, you know, I don't want to have a debate with you, but I just checked the regulations, and it's what it said.
There's no debate. I'm a veteran who's on the post 9/11 GI bill, and I'm telling you that it's not a thing.
Okay, well then, I'd like to see that. But that, but even, but that still does not address the data issue.
Okay, the data issue, I agree, but I would like to say that we spent time in shared governance committees, hours and hours, and that's why the recommendation was made, because the data was brought to us. But I do agree, it would have been nice to have the data, you know, in front of us right now. But that's, that's what the, I was on the committees, the college council, the calendar committee, and that data was brought to us, and that's why we made the decision.
Okay, so, any other discussion? Go ahead, trustee Salvie.
Right. I wasn't around here when the calendar was changed, or the winter intercession was eliminated. I'm generally familiar, been told, what the rationale was since I became a trustee, and I've heard the, all the controversy about this. I've heard rationales coming from the administration, I've heard rationales coming from other people on campus, and it's been very frustrating to me for, for what seems to be, to be kind of watching, what seems to be people talking past each other. And I really hope the next time we go through this cycle, that if one group makes an assertion about pedagogical rationales, or student success, VA benefits, and all this, that we get some resolution, we get people to sit down and talk about their items one at a time, figure out if they can ever come to an agreement. What is the information behind this? Is one set of data being used for this claim and another set over here? I'm very dissatisfied with the extent to which I keep hearing assertions going back and forth without what seems to be the requisite amount of people who are making these getting together and talking out, and then bringing to the board, and not just for one meeting, saying, well, here it is, but bringing these to the board with a discussion, and so we can hear, see a presentation, go over the material, come back and make an informed decision.
Thank you, trustee Salvie. So, I do have a question. So, for our next round, just, Dr. Miller, when is, what is the date, the month, when we have to report what our calendar is going to be? Is that January you mentioned?
Well, to the federal government, for the purpose of financial aid, it is December 31st, or by December 31st. For the chancellor's office, it's roughly the end of March, March 15th, March 31st.
Reporting on the calendar.
Yes.
The chancellor's office ideally expects that from the colleges, March or April.
Yeah, March or April. So, that's, but believe me, it would be my intent, in whatever position I have here at the college, that we get this resolved much before that next year.
And Dr. Miller, if I may, to trustee Brown's question. The calendar committee, I co-chair the committee, the committee will meet on the 26th of March, and we will pick up the discussion of the 16-17 calendar at that time. We hope to get this process done through the two remaining meetings this semester and early into the fall semester, so the recommendation from shared governance calendar committee to the college coordinating council can be brought earlier into the fall semester. So, a recommendation can go through the superintendent president, ultimately to the board, probably October, November, so there will be time to do it. If the decision is made to make any changes, and the decision is approved by the board in the fall semester, that will give the necessary lead time to make the changes within in the fall semester, that will give the necessary lead time to make the changes within the BANNER system, so that we could effectively have it in place at the start of the fall 17 academic period.
Okay. In, in the recommendation, Dr. Miller, you said we would be waiting on the results for PERB. So, if we don't hear, do we have any idea when this is going to be, or are we going to proceed as though we have to change the calendar, even if we have not heard from PERB? Or what is the rationale? What, what are we doing?
The, the best information that we have from our council on this issue is that the PERB ruling could come down within the next four to six months. Now, regardless of that, Dr. Bell, I think, stated it very well, we will be doing all the other work moving forward, because if, in fact, that's the remaining obstacle, quote-unquote, then we would likely get ahead of that with the, with the Faculty Association, and sit down and have conversations with them, and sort of reopen the whole topic.
Okay, so, let me just finish my point. So, what I am, at this point, I myself don't really have clear understanding of how does a winter, a calendar with a winter, or without a winter, benefit students. All of the data that has been given by either side contradicts one another. So, what we need to get, at least what I would like to get, as we move forward, is data, first of all, data that we all are in sync with one another, because I can prepare my data, and you can prepare your data, and then, so we really need to put this to rest. If we can find out how this calendar, does it, or does it not, benefit students? Because our role here is about student. It's not about anything else but student. So, this is what I would like to see us come together. I am going to accept, I will vote for the recommendation, based on, one, we are getting a new superintendent. That's a fact. That's a fact, okay? Be it Dr. Miller, be it whomever, we're getting a new superintendent. That's one. Number two is, I really do like to keep agreements. Part of our negotiation was centered around waiting on PERB. That was one of the, so, under those two things, as far as the financial and of that stuff, I am not one way or another. Those are the only two things that I can really hold. So, before I continue, I think, Justy Lewis, had something else you wanted to add?
And I'm not trying to be combative here, but I, I have to just say that it's not like we're sitting in a position where, where the faculty was negotiated with for this calendar to begin with. So, if you decided to change the calendar right now, you're not breaking a negotiation, you're not, you're not foregoing negotiations or any of that, and I understand what you're saying, but from having the conversation with them, that's, that wasn't the agreement. The agreement was to allow shared governance to take its, its course. So, I think that's a, a really poor excuse. I do agree that there is a superintendent coming in, and that's something we need to weigh, but everything else here is, is not valid, in my mind.
Thank you.
Anyone?
I just want to make one point, because I deal with scheduling all the time, and we did have data, the trustees did, that most community colleges and universities do not have winter session, and what, and those that do, it's very special. It's study abroad. And we also had these wonderful students tonight. Study abroad is the highest impact of teaching, and one of the reasons of not having a winter session, we're finding, is that we can get, end the school year early in May, so that these students can go abroad, and for a cheaper price. And so, I'm not, most universities say you have very few courses, and they're very special courses, they're not the regular type of courses.
Well, I thank you about the universities, but since this is a community college, we are going to.
I know about colleges, too, you know, and we had a study of, of community colleges. It was in front of all the representatives.
Go ahead, Justy Martin.
I want to make a few comments. First, it was this very topic, a year or so ago, that I meticulously made notes of every single argument on every side, and when it was my turn to speak, I tried to replay every one of those arguments. I don't remember, and I'm not one with a good memory, so this isn't to say that it wasn't made, but I don't remember at the time, a compelling academic argument that supported the winter intercession. What I do remember was that there was some disagreement, for really good reasons, within the academics, that some of the STEM classes that were being, like math courses or science courses, where you had to put a lot of information in a single day, in a very compressed calendar, made it very difficult for students, where more, some more other lecture-type courses, having a more compact course in a winter, wasn't quite so bad. So, I think there were some, even within the academics, we can't treat them all exactly the same. And there were arguments about whether they were our students taking these courses, or there were arguments about whether they were university students coming and just trying to pick up a course. I remember some of that. I do want to thank Professor Pallone for her presentation. I will say, her single address here tonight was probably as effective, if not more effective, than what transpired a year ago. I mean, it's really, between her and Trustee Lewis, this really got me thinking, but what we didn't get a whole lot of was those kinds, those kinds of details. And basically, what our interim superintendent is saying is, we need to work through some of those, and to do that properly, it needs to be done at a time where it can be set up properly for the federal government. And so, that's the argument that I'm going to accept. In a way, if you'll forgive me, he mentioned the Federal Reserve, I'm going to play a Janet Yellen and tell you that the absence of patience doesn't mean that I'm not going to be patient. So, the fact that I'm supporting not having winter doesn't mean that I won't be willing to support a winter at a future time, when it's given a proper assessment, in the proper frame, and the, and the proper time. So, I will support his recommendation. I would ask for one other criteria that has seemed to miss the conversation, and that is, I'm aware that Cal State LA, which is, if not our single, one of our largest transition universities, has going through a schedule change of their own. And so, I think there's some dynamics that are occurring amongst key universities that we work with, around us, that we should be aware of, that are different next year, or '16, than they were in '14, or '13, or whenever this all started. And I think it's important for us to at least touch in on those, and see how our schedule sinks, or doesn't sink, with some of the bigger feeder schools that we send our students usually transition to. So, that'd be part of that assessment that I would ask for, come October, November, when this is all picked up again.
Thank you. So, Justy Thompson?
A question for Ms. Cooper. If we take action contrary to what's Dr. Miller's recommending, will that have an effect on the PERB discussion or decision?
In my opinion, Trusty Thompson, it would not, because the PERB decision is addressing the 12, 13 calendar year. They're not addressing later years.
Okay. Well, I agree with that, however, the decision that PERB makes would be used as reason either for or against a calendar change, by, by, by either side. So, yes, technically, it only affects that one year, but practically speaking, it has other implications. And that's, we don't need to debate it or discuss it, I just wanted to make that point.
And I'd like to say one other, one other point, and this is just real politic. I got two comments, real politic about this. Obviously, this is the poster child of trouble here on campus between, or tensions on campus. And I think, I recognize that, and I want to be sensitive to that. And so, I would ask everyone, as they're working through this, there, and I don't exactly understand what they are, but there may be certain sub-issues that need to be parsed. For example, we're looking for some PERB direction on how, whether we have a winter or don't have a winter, may impact salaries. That's something we could, should be able to parse out and deal with separately from what may academically line up better for students one way or another. And there may be some other issues that I would say could be parsed out, why people are so adamantly for or against winter, that I don't quite understand, but they're very real issues to real lives on the ground, and I think we can recognize that, and have a willingness to separate those and deal with them all, in, in what's best, both for students, and staff, and everyone. So, that would be my hope, as this moves forward.
If I may, President Brown, let me clarify the issue that's before PERB, so you're clear on this. What PERB is deciding is, as Dr. Miller said, what has to be negotiated. That is the only issue they're deciding. Our position was that the board had the authority to change the calendar, but that we had to negotiate the effects of that change. The hearing officer determined that the calendar was a hybrid, and the actual decision had to be negotiated. That is the issue before PERB, is what has to be negotiated. So, PERB won't be expressing any opinion at all on whether or not we should or should not have a winter, only what has to be negotiated when making that change.
As a result, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, Justy Thompson?
Where does that leave us, in terms of where we are right now?
In terms of this year's decision?
Yes.
The board should make whatever decision it feels is appropriate for the coming year. The PERB will not be looking to see what decisions are made, with or without a winner, on a going-forward basis. What PERB is concerned about is the working conditions. Did the district properly negotiate with the affected units, the effects of making a change that has an impact on working conditions? And how many hours someone works, which weeks of the year they work, those are working conditions. We negotiated the effects of that. PERB said, "No, you had to negotiate the whole change," and that's the only issue there. So, when I say that it won't affect PERB, our decision, your decision, excuse me, won't affect PERB, PERB is, would only look to see, if we made another change, did you negotiate it, which is Dr. Miller's concern, which is, another change would affect the terms and conditions of employment on the affected units. And there has been no negotiation on that point now, and although it would be unlikely, there could be an unfair that would, would result from that.
You say there has been negotiation on that point?
There has not, to my understanding. There's been no negotiation on another change, because the union and the district agreed to not negotiate that point pending the PERB decision.
Okay.
Okay, so, are you finished, Justy Thompson?
No.
Go ahead.
It seems to me that we ought to lay out a schedule and, and address the various issues associated with this. Obviously, not this evening. Take into consideration the expectation of what PERB may or may not do, and when it may or may not do it, but this keeps coming up. I think we need to go back and really revisit the question of, what are the, what's going to be the impact on students? Are they going to be plus, negative, no change whatsoever? Those are the various options. But let's try to lay out a schedule for doing this in the months ahead, and not try to decide this evening. So, I think where we are now probably is to go forward with Dr. Miller's recommendation.
Go ahead, Justy Lewis.
So, PERB gets, keeps getting brought up, and I, it's been like a year since I read the decision, but I remember some terminology, something like, "The judge ordered us to reinstate winter," and that hasn't been said. But if it, if it doesn't have an impact on it, it was part of the judgment, I don't understand how that works.
Well, and that's on appeal.
And the action we took, that's what we appealed.
Right, but, but I'm just saying, you keep bringing up the court case, and how it doesn't affect, his judgment was to reinstate winter, so it would affect.
And we have one appeal on that.
Right, and I understand that.
And the district chose to appeal.
But he has the power to affect it, is what I'm saying.
No, not, well, it's on appeal.
I mean, it, when the judgment comes, yes.
His point is, that he could have an impact.
Just to make.
That's exactly right.
All right. When the decision comes down, on a, when the appellate decision comes down, yes, it could have an effect.
Right, that's all I'm saying.
We don't know, I don't know about you, but I don't have a crystal ball, know what the.
No, 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 I wasn't saying either way, I was saying, right? I was saying it had an effect.
That's what you said.
Call a question.
Okay, so, we have a motion by Trusty Mann, and a second by Trusty Watt. Trusty Lewis?
Nay.
Nay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, would you, raise your hands up, so I could see. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, all in favor, all trustees except for Trusty Lewis, to accept the recommendation of Dr. Miller. So, that's for that. Thank you.
Correction, I believe the second was by Dr. Fellow, is that right? Was it me? Okay.
No, I, I gave the motion.
Oh, she made the motion, he seconded it.
Okay, so, did you guys hear that? Let's change that. So, it was a motion by Trusty Fellow, and second by Trusty, sorry. Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, so now, we will move, what are we moving to? To item, you said H? Yeah, H, approval of Facilities Master Plan Development Firm, HGA Architects and Engineering.
Thank you, President Fellow, as, President, excuse me, President Brown, pardon me.
It's been a long night.
It has been. I told you, nothing was going to make me sad tonight, though, so it's okay. Even that kind of mistake. Okay, so, item H is the approval of Facilities Master Plan Development Firm, HGA Architects and Engineers, as our executive director, Ruben Smith, and our associate vice president of Planning and Innovation come to the podium. I want to draw to your attention to two documents that were actually left on your seats today. They are, they are updates of, of what you're about to see tonight. And I want to be clear on what the action is that we are requesting, which it is based upon, it is, it is the document that says Phase 2 plus Phase 3 proposed work plans, plan. It's a project scope for the development of the Centennial Facilities Master Plan. And I know a little bit later, Trusty Salvage is going to want to speak in his capacity as the chair of the Budget and Audit Committee, which has also acted as a steering committee for the Centennial Facilities Master Planning Process, working with a core team of staff, and, and an advisory group, which includes Dr. Kostler, as well as Lonnie Shield. Dr. Kostler, a former superintendent president of, of our district for approximately 12 years, as I recall, and Lonnie Shield is on the PCC Foundation Board. So, again, the action is to approve the master plan scope. I want to draw people's attention to the last page of that scope, which speaks to the fee, which is $451,500. This was approved at a subsequent board meeting. HGA contract was approved at a subsequent board meeting, as was the dollar amount for the item, and this is funding that we've reserved in our '14, '15 budget, that we would continue to carry forward as this project moves forward. So, it's a long-winded introduction, I want to make sure everybody understood what we're doing here, and then I'll turn it over now to Ruben and Ryan, please.
Thank you, Dr. Miller, and good evening, board trustees. I'm really excited about this opportunity to get started on our Facilities Master Plan. It's been a long process, so I'm going to go through a really brief presentation, just to show where we've come, to get to this point. So, the first slide that I have is basically the development process. We started back in 2013, when we first came to you, and we asked for authorization for an RFQ to, to develop a selection process, where, and then from there, we actually awarded three firms, after interviewing, and going through an extensive process of reviewing those, the RFQs that were submitted. We interviewed four firms, we selected three to, to start a conceptual planning process. The community engagement started with this process last February of 2014. We had our first visioning session kickoffs, which went very well. We had a session all day, right here in this room, for the campus community, and then we had a, a follow-up date with the, with the community, and we engaged, and we listened, and there were several things that we heard from that. So, you know, we actually had an opportunity to go from March through June, where we had visioning sessions with the campus, with the schools, and, and we actually forwarded all of that information to the planning firm. With that, we had a community forum last November, where we had presentations from each one of those firms, you know, highlighting things that they, that they heard and they saw in those visioning sessions, looking at the data, and, and, and driving a plan, a conceptual plan, for what we need to look like in the next 10 or 15 years. From that, we went back to our facilities committees, went back to the facility committee, we looked at each one of those plans, we reviewed them, we reviewed all the information that came back from the, from the online tool, and, and that assessment, and we came to a recommendation. and we came to a recommendation identifying HGA Architects and Engineers as that firm that we'd like to select. And then in December, we came back to you, and with that recommendation, we presented that firm, and they came and they spoke. The one thing that we didn't do was we didn't nail down that scope of work. We didn't nail down exactly a timeline. And we've done our homework, and we've done that now going through the ad hoc committee, several core group meetings, and I think that we've done a very good job of selecting this firm. The goals for the Facility Master Plan, of course, we want to align them with the educational master plan. We want to make sure that we're meeting the needs as identified by the faculty and staff through those visioning sessions, and we will also continue to have more visioning sessions. And we also want to make sure that they're aligned specifically with the goals identified by you. We want to make sure that we're preserving the integrity of the iconic buildings. We want to make sure that it meets those standards, and that's going to be a policy discussion that we're going to come back to you in the next month to two months and have that discussion. But we want to make sure any new facility or enhancement facility maintains the integrity and character of PCC and the historic brand and being forward-thinking and building for the future. We also want to make sure that we're enabling the, we're creating the right atmosphere for teaching and learning and a work environment. We also want to make sure that we embrace the development of the campus paradigm that integrates teaching and learning and doing it in a single space. So those are things that we're working with the HGA. They understand that. They're aware of that. That's a part of their scope of work. From the visioning sessions, this is what we heard, and we developed principles on that. Distributed services, flexible, integrated, 24-hour access, welcoming partnerships, unscripted space, universal design, comfortable. Those are all things that we heard and the planning firm heard from the community and from the students, from the faculty, from everyone. So what we want to do is we want to create the ideal plan. We're looking at a 15-year plan. How do we do that? We want to make the highest and best use of spaces. We want to make sure that we are optimizing existing spaces. There's one thing that we don't want to do is we don't want to overbuild. We're a campus that we have to make sure that we identify the need with our enrollment. We are a high-enrollment school, however, we're landlocked. So what do we need to do is we need to make sure that we're as efficient as we possibly can with the existing space. What does that mean for our existing space? Do we increase and improve the efficiency of those classrooms? Are they larger? What does that space need to look like? That's a study that we'll do. We also have to consider the aging of our campus. As we are growing, we are also aging at the same time. Though the 2010 master plan, which we're currently building out with Measure P, did inform some of those things, we still have needs. We still have to consider what's necessary. This is not necessarily based on a planning and growth, but, I mean, I'm sorry, not based on building and growth, but it's very important that we consider the planning aspect of this. The California Community College Chancellor's Office, it requires us to periodically make sure that we're developing facility master plans because there's going to be opportunities for us to come back and ask for funding to improve our spaces. And they are going to want to drive that funding based on what is said in the educational master plan as it coincides with the facilities master plan. So it really has, it's really important for us to intertwine those together and considering what we've done with our existing facilities and our future development of planning and consideration for the space utilization and our facilities conditions assessment. We're a 90-year-old campus. We have over $100 million in conditional assessment where we've exhausted the use of our buildings in the next two or five years. So we've also considered today's needs. We have several items that have been identified as critical for the next one to two years. So what are those short-term needs? We're considering those, what we need to do, and then anything after that we need to defer. But if we have larger space needs, what do those need to be? For example, our building is a building that was built in the early '70s, but there's, you know, the recommendation to actually remove or change anything in that building would be a huge impact on campus. So it's too cumbersome for just a facility team to come about, to develop a plan to see what we need to do with that. We're asking that this plan include what needs to happen in a transition and in a phase because we need to make sure that we're not disrupting what we do, and that's teaching and learning. We want to make sure that we're cost-effective and it's data-driven. As Dr. Corner will develop, he will go through a brief presentation on how we got there and how the data is actually informing what the space needs are going to be. But it's going to be a continual improvement process for us. From that, we, this is the conceptual process. We're looking at visioning. Like I said, we've done a lot of visioning, but I don't think we're done yet. We're going to create a draft plan that is informed by the visioning. We're going to redefine and, I'm sorry, refine that ideal plan throughout this process, and hopefully, when we get to 2016 in January, you'll approve a plan that you find that is necessary and fitting for us for a 2030 build-out. Dr. Corner?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say how blessed we are to have Ruben. I've worked with a lot of facilities directors, and we have really one of the best here. And he truly understands how to take the educational needs of the institution and put it into a facilities plan, and I'm very grateful to work with him. One of the things that has been asked is how we go about converting what we see as the academic needs into space needs. And this is the draft of what our HGA architects have suggested in way of determining what space needs we have based on our academic programs and projected growth. The first step in it is to convert the growth into projected enrollments. We have begun that. You will see that one of the things that we discuss tonight is that there will be future policy issues for the board to address, and one of those will be looking at what our growth target should be for the year 2030. We have some draft estimates, but that will be for a later board discussion. We then take those projected enrollments and we compare that to what we have in terms of our current space utilization. There are areas in which we definitely need additional space, such as the lab sciences, and there may be some areas in which we could improve our efficiency in the use of space that we have existing. From that, we need to also consider what we project in the future being our new programs, our new initiatives, and our new partnerships, and really make sure that we develop space that fits what we see for the future. And we need to understand that that may involve changing pedagogies. These may not be the rooms that people are used to seeing. I forget who it was at our subcommittee, but they said that, I believe it was Dr. Kostler, said that we have a tough job because we're anticipating so much change that it's hard to put your finger on what it's going to look like in the future, and that's why we need to make sure that we're flexible when we start to look at these anticipated new programs. We need to look at our peers. What are other community colleges doing? What are universities and other educational institutions doing? And make sure that we're in line with the trends of education and meeting student needs in the most innovative, effective, and strategic manner. And then from there, we finally start to look at the space needs by department and type of space. Now, when we look at the departments and types of space, as was indicated in the principles, we really will be looking for integration, flexibility, and the sharing of space in a way that makes it easier for students and easier for faculty. We will try to minimize the need for specialized space so that we can meet future needs if what we develop changes. The last two steps are looking at possible alternatives that may contribute to student success because we do want to tie this into the educational master plan, and then starting to develop the building blocks, which from HGA are those actual types of classroom spaces that we're going to need and how many of them. Because in this Centennial Facilities Master Plan, they're not designing buildings. They're designing what we think should go into buildings, and that's what they refer to as building blocks. So a few things that we will have to be on the lookout for is this enrollment growth target for 2030 and beyond. And we need to consider that we do control our own growth to some extent. Yes, the state has an impact on what is funded and what is unfunded, but there are areas in which we do control. We decide every year whether or not we want to go for the total amount of growth that is awarded. There are things that we consider in terms of international students. We need to look at our utilization currently and really start to understand what that is so that we know exactly how much space we need to build. That doesn't mean that if we have enough space, we still don't need buildings because, as Ruben said, a lot of our buildings have reached their lifespan and will need renovations or replacements. We need to look at the roles of centers, distance learning, and online classes. These will impact our utilization on campus, and we have to, as a group, come to some conclusion on what we think the best model is for how we disperse our enrollment across centers in the main campus. And lastly, we have to provide alternatives with assumptions to help understand what the implication of these growth projections may be on our facilities master plan. When we look at these FTS projections, the areas that we will look at when we get to that policy discussion are looking at state-funded growth, both in credit and non-credit, because as the board has heard in previous meetings, there are some major changes with AB 86 and how we're growing non-credit. We need to consider those things. We need to look at our non-resident FTS and decide how large we want that non-resident FTS to be. How many students do we think we can accommodate from other countries through our international students program? And we need to consider what we feel to be an appropriate amount of unfunded FTS to protect the college and to make sure that we allow for the appropriate amount of access for the students in our communities. What we did is we projected out based on the last 20-plus years of enrollments. This is as far back as the state digital system goes. We could probably look up some old pieces of paper, but this is what they have in their system. And you can see it's been pretty erratic. But based even on those erratic conditions, what we see is that, on average, the school grew 1.1% every single year. If we do a linear progression on that, we end up in 2030 being about 17% larger than we are now in terms of total FTS, including international students. The college has created a projection that looks a little bit more like this. Considering what we feel to be a projected growth, especially over the next few years, you notice that there's a steep increase, and then it kind of levels off towards more of a normal growth rate. That's because over the next few years, we do anticipate larger amounts of growth than 1.1%. And also, we do consider that there will probably be some increases in non-resident students. But these are decisions that the board is going to have to make. Once we make those decisions, we will be able to take those to HGA, and HGA can create a vision based on the parameters that the board sets.
Now, the path to the Facility Master Plan is basically determining the growth for 2030, understanding the optimal capacity for the campus, determining what will be fixed, renovated, and replaced, identifying space priorities and campus direction, and creating a phasing plan that we talked about with cost implementation and considering what the space utilization needs to be based on efficiency. Our community outreach efforts will include workshops, coordinated meetings, organizational presentations, online engagement, one-on-one meetings, educational materials, newsletters, and press. And the last item is the timeline. Phase 1, we was conceptual envisioning, which occurred in 2014. We're now in Phase 2. Toward the middle of the screen, you'll see that we're developing a draft plan, which includes refining the growth projection, as Ryan discussed, utilizing a space analysis, landscape in open spaces, infrastructure sustainability, circulation and accessibility, and determining the optimal capacity.
And for the, and for the constituent groups in the audience who maybe can't read this, you should note that there are multiple interactions with our shared governance committees throughout this timeline in order to refine our current vision into an ideal plan.
There's also multiple interactions with the community at large as well.
Yes. Yes.
So.
That concludes the presentation.
Yeah. So at this point, again, remind that the action is to approve the master plan scope. Certainly, Ruben and Ryan and I and others who may be necessary are available to answer any questions.
Any questions? Go ahead, trustee Salvage.
Okay. Yeah, I was chairman of the ad hoc committee, which consists of me and trustee Fellow and trustee Martin. The first thing I want to do is just give a little sort of context. I've been through this sort of thing, facilities plans and that kind of thing, and it's, for college, it's a really big deal. This is a really big deal for Pasadena City College. The decisions that the board makes, the decisions that are, and the plans that are developed here are going to be something that people are going to be using and living with for the next, you know, 30 to 50 years. Long-range plans are always, just in the way of context, long-range plans are always challenging because of the uncertainty. We don't know exactly what's going to happen in the future. You deal with that uncertainty by trying to do the best possible job of being, coming up with a plan that is flexible and can be adjusted as circumstances arise. And even if you have buildings that are already in place under your plan, that they're built in such a way that, again, contingencies and flexibility can be utilized. About three-quarters of our students are from outside PCC's district, and I've always looked at that as a vote of confidence in the quality of the teaching that goes on in our classrooms. I think, you know, Professor Cairo's not here, but, you know, congratulations, or, you know, faculty members out there in the audience. I always look at that as a vote of confidence in the quality of the teaching that we have here now and which I had when I was a student. We need facilities that support that so that we can continue to have that kind of a reputation, and we need classrooms, lab, and all the spaces for the support people. It was interesting, at our last meeting on the 6th of this month, I mentioned somewhere during our discussions that when I was walking to that meeting, that when I looked around on the way to the meeting with sort of a facilities hat on, you know, when I saw students walking around, you know, what I saw were people that needed to have a place to work or people that needed to have a seat in a classroom. And Ruben spoke up and said, yes, exactly. That's exactly how he looks at it, and that's a good thing. So I'm glad, you know, Ruben is our advocate, you know, from that point of view. Basically, what we're going to end up with is, at the end of this plan, is some number of square feet of a certain type somewhere. That's what the plan is all going to boil down to. With respect to that meeting on the 3rd or the 6th of this month, it went extremely well. There had been a monumental amount of progress that had been made since we were kind of loose at the meeting before. The approach we've got is a good approach. It's sound. It seems like we're picking up on all the points that we need to, to have a rational plan developed here, something that'll be efficient. And I've looked over, I went over the contract, the proposed contract with HGA. I've seen and had involvement in engineering and architectural service contracts and planning contracts, and I think that the match between what we need to do and what we plan to do and what it says they're going to help us do is just right. The thing that jumps out at me again and again when I think about this is the growth projection. You know, the growth projection is a key, key element of what comes out of this plan at the end. And basically, the input for that, the way I would put it, is what are we going to teach? To whom are we going to teach this? How are we going to teach that, in classrooms, online? And finally, you know, where? If we're teaching it in some facility, well, where is that facility going to be? It's certainly going to be here. I expect CEC is going to stay there. We have a opportunity, well, I understand we have an agreement with El Monte now for the extension of the contract that we talked about at our last meeting. And there may be opportunities elsewhere in the district. And if you look at where our people are that go to school here and where our facilities are, you know, obvious area where we ought to look is over to the west and, you know, moving in that direction from the main campus. And there are opportunities out there, and everybody knows about them. So I, by the way, efficiency is another factor here that's going to come into play. If we didn't grow at all and we just needed to replace a whole bunch of junky facilities because they were worn out and tired and dysfunctional, we might find that we could use, make, do with less square footage because there are ways of introducing efficiencies. And how those efficiencies will be introduced, there are a variety of ways, but we're looking And how those efficiencies will be introduced, there are a variety of ways, but we're looking at that, and it's recognized, so I'm glad we brought that up. So I'm particularly interested in the key board policy decisions that are going to be necessary for this really big deal that the college will live with for decades. And the first, as I mentioned, well-founded growth projections. One that occurs to me is criteria for demolition of existing facilities. You know, we saw three different plans for a great deal of development on this main campus when the three teams were competing for this work. And all three of them involved, you know, huge build-out and an awful lot of demolition and that. I'm not sure that we're looking at something quite as aggressive and ambitious as that. And, but there are buildings on this campus that are probably going to have to be taken out. Some of them may need to be taken out because they are just in the wrong place. They might not yet be dysfunctional or beyond renovation. And then there are those that perhaps are beyond renovation or restoration just because of their age and configuration. So that's something that should be of interest to the, keen interest to the board, how we come up with that. We've got a couple more points. Facilities off of the main campus, when we decide what we're going to, where we're going to do the teaching, that's a matter that should come to the board. And then finally, the time horizon and phasing. So the thing we need to watch for here as we're going through this is to make sure we don't let any element of the planning get ahead of the sign-off at the appropriate points for these key policy decisions. By the way, on slide 11, the graph that showed the growth, it really looks pretty drastic there, the way it jumps up and down. But if you look at the, if you look at the bottom line, the graph starts out at 17,000. If you look at that graph, not with a starting point at 17,000 in that vertical axis there, if you start out at zero, it's not that drastic. So it's not as if, you know, we're being really whipsawed here. And the type of growth that we're talking about accommodating, if we, if you take that down to the zero axis, it doesn't look like we're going to go off here as drastically as that might initially suggest. And those are my remarks. Did a good job.
Thank you. Okay, so before us...
Trustee Fellow.
Oh, trustee Fellow. I think, I sit on this committee also with trustee Martin, and I was impressed by the amount of work that went into this, especially at our last meeting and the decisions you came up with. There is no recommendation, but I will make a recommendation to, a motion to approve the facilities master plan development at this time.
Thank you. And we have a first from Dr. Fellow and a second by Dr., is that ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes.
Is the, I thought the action item was the...
It is an action item.
Approval of the contract.
Yeah, the action item is the approval of the scope, which will be part and parcel of the contract.
Contract that's already been approved, has it not?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
The scope.
So trustee Lewis?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor? Raise your hand, because I can't see you. Thank you. So motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now we move to item I, foundation gala.
Right. And right before we do that, I do want to say a sincere thanks to trustee Salvage and Martin and fellow for their work on this effort. I think it is a good example of the board and staff working well together and making good progress on a very important, a very important matter for the district going forward. So as our troops come together here, we have Bobby Abrams, who is our executive director of the foundation, and Chris McPeak, who's the director of operations for the foundation, and they're going to do a brief report on one-time permission to serve alcohol at district premises in support of the foundation gala. And that is item I in your packet.
All right. Good evening. I'm here to bring you up to date on our gala preparations. As you know, Bill and Carol Thompson are the chairs for the event. And even at the time of the preparation of the documents that are in your folder, we were at 700,000, having raised that much in funding. We are now at $820,000 being raised by this gala. So we have put a lot of work, a lot of time into making sure that this is a wonderful event for our community. What we are coming to you tonight with is a request for a one-time permit to serve alcohol at this event. According to the information that's in your packet, under Business and Professions Code 25608, we do have permission under the law to do this, but we do need permission by the governing board of the organization. Once we have your permission, we will be working with the Kitchen for Exploring Foods, and they will actually hold the liquor license because they will be our caterer that night. But they do have to also obtain a permit to have alcohol on this premises. They will also submit that permit on our behalf. Any questions?
Second.
Go ahead. Is there going to be a cost at all for the permit?
I'm sorry, a what?
Is there going to be a cost for the permit?
It's $25.
Oh, okay. And then, sorry, didn't hear that. And then, and then on the insurance, so we're covered on like any liability if anyone...
Yes. Those insurance forms are also in your packet. And I talked with George Shidyaq here and also with Joe to talk about the insurance needs of the entire event. Typically, we require $1 million for an event like this. Because this is liquor, we've asked them to up it to $2 million, and any liability will actually be covered by the catering company.
And this is actually also the week, just as a reminder, it's the week between the end of the spring semester and the start of the summer, so it's a student-free week anyway, and that Saturday is student-free. The only thing that we'll have going on campus, Stella Murgar is going to be here with her...
Conference.
Her conference, but it won't conflict.
And also, just so you know, no one will be served any liquor that is not a paid guest that night. So we will have some students who are part of the entertainment that night. We will have some volunteers there that night, but we will have them identified. Volunteers will be wearing a special shirt. Anyone that's performing will be in performance attire. And anyone who is actually a paid guest and who will be checking in at the registration will have a way for us to identify that they're actually a guest of the evening.
And I'll just add very quickly, this is not uncommon for other community college districts to do this. It's actually fairly common. Some districts do it very regularly, depending on what's happening on their campuses.
Typically, when a foundation has an event on the campus, this is the proper way of going about handling it.
Okay, so I, go ahead.
Just one quick comment to just say thank you and congratulate Bobby and Chris for the outstanding work that they've done, along with the rest of the foundation staff for this event. This is phenomenal. I mean, $820,000, and we got, what, almost two months to go yet before the event takes place? So, which reminds me, if you have not bought tickets for this, made arrangements to do so, or a table, or whatever else, you still have time to do that, so I would encourage you to do it. But thanks so much for all the good work you've done. This is marvelous. Absolutely.
Okay, so do we have any other discussions? I think I heard a motion over here. Who was it? That was motion by Bill Thompson and a second by whom?
Mister Fellow.
By Johnny Fellow. Okay, trustee?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand so I could see you. We have all in favor, except for one?
Yeah, I'm a no.
Okay, so see, that's why it's good to raise your hand.
It has nothing to do with that.
So we have six, seven in favor and one opposed. Is that it?
We have six in favor and one opposed and one...
And student trustee. Okay, so we got it. Okay, moving right along. Thank you so much. Okay. All right, now we go to item J, adoption of 214, 15, and 16 memorandum of understanding.
That is correct. This is board agenda item J in your packets. It is the adoption of 2014, 15 through 2015, 16 memorandum of understanding between the Pasadena City College Management Association and the Pasadena Area Community College District. This is the matter that we discussed in closed session, so I believe the board is ready to consider action at this point.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Second. We have a motion by Dr. Mann and a second by Dr. Fellow. Trustee, do we have any discussions? None? Okay. Trustee Lewis?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so now we'll move on to...
Item K.
Okay, oh, we have a resolution 532.
Yes, so in concert with item J, item K is to adopt resolution 532, adopting public agency retirement services par supplemental employment employee retirement plan attached to the memorandum of understanding between the management association and the district. This is the SERP plan, giving managers the opportunity to take advantage of that should they care to.
Okay, trustee motions?
Second.
Okay, moved by trustee Martin and second by trustee Fellow. Any discussion? Trustee Lewis?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry unanimously. Dr. Douglas, do you have any comments?
I was going to wait for my turn, but thank you very much. We appreciate it. We think it's a good MOU, and we're glad the board decided to move along with it. You've got some happy managers tonight. Thank you.
Great. All right, now we're going to move on to accreditation update.
Yes, information item accreditation update. I'd like to invite Dr. Kathy Scott, our associate vice president for academic affairs, and the district's accreditation liaison officer, and professor Stephanie Fleming, who is our self-evaluation faculty coordinator, our superstar and our superstar associate, Dr. Scott.
Superstar.
We're having shirts made.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the board. As you know, the, we were visited by the site team March...
This is under, I'm sorry, this is under item, you have a PowerPoint under item M as well.
Okay, we were visited by the accreditation site team March 2nd through 5th, and they provided an exit report on March 5th. And we're going to provide a brief summary of what they said at that report. They made clear that they evaluated the institution using the accreditation standards. It was very important to them that we understood that. The recommendations they made were, again, based on the standards and whether or not we met the standards. During the time that they were here, they spoke with over 300 faculty, staff, administrators, board members, and students. They held the meet and greet, two public forums, and then the exit report. They told us that the findings that they were going to give us were preliminary and that the final decision would come from ACCJC after their meeting in June, and we would probably hear in July. In terms of their overall comments, they said that PCC has an excellent learning environment, dynamic programs, and a vibrant community. They were very impressed with many of the things they saw here, and they made that very clear. They also made clear the need for the campus to become more familiar with the accreditation standards, and that will be something that we need to work on going forward. And the standards for 2014 have changed, and so they encouraged us to start looking at the new standards and become familiar with what we need to be looking at towards the future. And they also said that in our future reports, to be sure to include all pertinent evidence and highlight our excellent programs.
Part of their preliminary report was to give us several commendations for some of the excellence that they saw here on our campus. These included distance education, and specifically, the distance education program was commended for exceeding all of the standards that are required. And they also highlighted the professional learning opportunities that are provided for instructors who teach in the online environment. They highlighted our commitment to student success on our campus, and specifically, they highlighted many of our pathways programs, including design tech, the first-year experience, our veteran services, and our graduation initiative. They highlighted and commended the welcoming and inclusive environment that's been created on our campus, and they said that that was highly supported by our mission, our values, many of the services that we offer to our students, and the campus life that they noticed while they were here visiting us. We also received a commendation for our fine facility services, and we've also been able to highlight the excellent work of Ruben and his team and the excellent work that they do in providing phenomenal facilities so that we are conducive to teaching and learning. And then we also received a commendation for our child development center. It was commended for its high-quality services, and as a parent of a child that goes there, I was very excited to see that. And the ACCJC also commended specifically the program they have with the workforce development grant that we have to help train students going through the child development program.
They also provided us with several possible recommendations, and they told us that, of course, these would be made formalized when we get the report in July. The first area was governance. They felt that we needed systematic, transparent, participative processes, and we need to use them effectively. These processes should be systematically and regularly evaluated. They also felt that there needs to be effective communication between various constituency groups, including the academic senate, administrators, faculty, students, and the board. And they said in their final comment about governance that all groups need to work together for the good of the institution. In their second possible recommendation, it was also related to governance, but it was about the evaluation of governance. We need to develop and implement formal processes for regularly evaluating each component of our governance and decision-making structures, and we need to use the results for improvement. And the results of the regular evaluations need to be communicated widely to the campus so that we are able to improve. The third recommendation had to do with ethics and our ethics, our codes of ethics, and they said that we need to follow, and their word embrace, and demonstrate the behavior outlined in our approved codes of ethics. The fourth recommendation had to do with evaluation materials. They said that we need to be sure that we include SLOs for any group that has responsibility for learning outcomes on the campus. That includes part-time faculty, full-time managers, staff, anybody who has responsibility for learning outcomes. The fifth recommendation was for professional development. We need a comprehensive, coordinated professional development program for all personnel, and it needs to be developed through participatory governance. The sixth recommendation, our planning processes need to be systematically evaluated and improved. And the seventh recommendation, also related to planning, is that programming view needs to be integrated with institutional processes for planning, the allocation of resources, Speaking for the 13-person team who was sitting behind her, Kathy Smith clearly conveyed the need for us to get along, to work together for the good of the institution, and to move forward. And as Dr. Miller said in his communication to the campus, he is personally committed to doing that, and that we all have to stay focused on that message.
Which brings us to our planning as we move forward. We've already reported to you several times about how we're already working on the AIPs, the self-identified recommendations that we have for ourselves. And so now, even though it's in a preliminary stage, we want to make sure we're also addressing these possible recommendations. We've been, we've started these discussions already in planning and priorities at our last meeting on Monday. We had an extensive discussion about how to move forward with this. In just kind of a preliminary way, what we're doing is kind of highlighting which of the possible recommendations relate to the AIPs that we've already identified so that we can prioritize the AIPs that will relate to those recommendations. We're having discussions about how to best implement those on campus. Some of the preliminary discussions about... Some of the preliminary discussions about doing this is to, you know, put these recommendations and the AIPs into categories, possibly having ad hoc task groups, possibly using already existing shared governance groups that we have, so that we can assign some of that work to the groups, you know, when it fits and when it's applicable. Obviously, we have to have a group that's addressing some of our governance concerns. We also need to talk about the evaluation documents in terms of those student learning outcomes, but that's going to need to be something that includes the bargaining groups and, you know, the legality of how all of that's going to play out. We're gonna need to put possibly a group together to address the professional development. Now, obviously, we already have a campus-wide committee that can take on some of that work. And then we need to facilitate how we're going to integrate our planning and our program review and the evaluation. And our discussion about that is that we want to make sure that that conversation is existing at multiple places across our campus. Right now, we have robust program review, but it happens in this one place, and so we want to make sure that all of our other shared governance groups that relate to program review are talking about program review, so that it's integrated and, you know, reflecting the recommendations that were given to us. Moving on with that preliminary plan, we'll also be discussing this with the board about how it is that we're going to move forward with the review of the ethics policies to implement the board education plan and the board's self-evaluation, and then also so that the board is facilitating the discussions related to the governance-related issues from possible recommendation number one.
And board members, I know, are planning on informal coffees in the near future, as well as strategic conversations. As we move forward, and we have either, as Stephanie said, ad hoc task groups or using existing committees, this is a proposed plan, but we will be presenting it to various groups and discussing it with people. First, we need to prioritize the work, and we have already identified the 19 AIPs that connect directly to the recommendations. Those should be the ones we address first. The other AIPs don't have to be addressed until three years from now. Doesn't mean that we're not gonna work on them, but there are certain things we need to do more quickly. Using the priorities each group or committee creates, they should create a plan with steps and timelines and responsible individuals and committees, so that we should be sure that this work is taking place. We need to decide what work can be done or at least started this semester, identify tasks that can be done over the summer, and create a preliminary plan for work in fall of '15. And as we're going about all of these steps, we need to be collecting evidence so that when we write the follow-up report, which will be due in about a year, we have all the things that we need, and we can show them that we are taking everything extremely seriously and moving forward in the way that they have said we need to do.
So if I, I'll just end this by saying that the next steps are to put the plans into effect and action, which we've already started on. And the way this works is, is the, the team came and went, they had about two or three weeks to put their, their report together, they give that report, they send that report up to the, to the ACCJC, the Accrediting Commission for Community Junior Colleges. Mr. John Nixon, or Dr. John Nixon, as a staff member up there, he will work with our team chair, Kathy Smith, and they will massage the, the final document, then they will send it to me as interim superintendent and president, and I will have an opportunity to share it with the appropriate folks on campus to discuss any errors of fact or errors in fact. And then we'll have an opportunity to respond to the errors in fact. That then goes back to the team chair. She then finalizes the report. It goes back to the commission, and the commission staff then makes the recommendation as to where we are with this, with this situation, whether we will be reaffirmed or put on some level of sanction, warning, probation, or show cause. On June 4th, we will journey up to the commission, we being myself, Dr. Kathy Smith, or ALO, and we will be conveying an invitation to the academic senate president at the time, Dr. Kathy Scott, excuse me.
That's okay.
The ALO, and then also myself, and then the academic senate president, whether it's Eduardo Cairo or Valerie Foster, or however that election goes. And we will then present a united front about what it is that we've done, we'll tell them what we did as of March 5th up until June 4th, give them a sense of that. And then we will thank them basically for the accreditation process, what it means to the institution, how it helps us to improve, and basically be very positive about the whole thing. And then we will say goodbye, and then they will make their decision. And then as a campus, we will know what the outcome was, likely the first week in July, give or take, is when we'll get notice of what's going on. And then we'll have approximately a year from that point to do our follow-up report, whatever it is, if in fact we are placed on warning, for example.
Correct.
Okay, go ahead. That's well.
I know that we thanked you before, but it was so clear after we went through accreditation how much great work had been, the foundation had been laid. All of the AIPs that you all had worked under were just so spot-on, and so it really, I think, put us in a very good position. And I reported out to my community that I thought we fared very well, and I was very impressed with the accreditation team. But really, thanks to all your good work. I was, the officers had a debriefing with the ACCJC team, and we received some good constructive feedback, but one of the things that came up as a possible solution that we should continue came from Dr. Mann, and I guess we used to celebrate with cake, so I encouraged Dr. Miller to get some cake for you guys. You guys really deserve a celebration, so thank you.
We will. We sent them flowers.
Any other questions, thoughts? No? Go ahead.
No, I would just like to say, I think this plan is excellent, and I think we, as far as the board, could you go back to the board part of the plan? That's like one or two slides back. There, one slide back. The only thing I could say is I think we should start as soon as possible, so that when Dr. Miller and Dr. Scott go up to meet with the ACCJC, they can then say, here's what we've already do, because you are permitted to give an update, I think, on what we're doing, and.
Correct.
There's no reason why the board can't do a coffee, our, you know, review our ethics policy, that needs to be, we can do all of that before June, or most of it.
In 20 seconds or less, Dr. Coroner's gonna respond to that very briefly.
There you go.
The mic, Mike, thanks.
We already have some planned dates for the coffee chats, and your illustrious president has already said to go forward, and we'll be scheduling those this week.
Thank you. Okay, okay, so this was just information, right?
That's correct.
So no action required. Okay, so do we have any report from our superintendent president?
Yes, just two very brief comments, statements. First of all, I don't think I did this at the last meeting. I wanted to just do a shout-out again for the Young Frankenstein production that was done here by our, our performing arts faculty and our incredible students. I also want to thank Ann Ketchum and the Opera Program for an amazing presentation and performance at the PCC Foundation Board Meeting yesterday. And finally, I want to indicate that, starting today, actually, starting this week, we had the Pamela L. Gerard Guest Artist Master Class Series begin, which is a funded series. This year, our performing arts faculty have invited Frank Tocelli, who's a composer and guest conductor, to be on campus all week, working with our orchestra, working with our, our chamber singers, working with a whole number of peoples, a whole number of folks. I had a great opportunity this afternoon to watch Professor Tocelli in action. He's a USC professor and a world-renowned expert in concert band and chamber singers and all the rest of these things today. All this is gonna culminate this Friday night in a performance, concert with the band and the choirs in Saxon Auditorium from 8:00 to 9:30 this Friday night. I've got a family thing that I've gotta get to, but I'm gonna cut it as short as possible so I can get to the performance. It's amazing. I mean, the quality and the talent and what we do on this campus is amazing, so I would encourage everybody to try to take advantage of that. Thank you very much.
Oh, that's it? Okay, so we're gonna now have announcements by sheer governance, and we will begin with the academic senate. Do we have anyone representing? Okay, there you go.
Hello again. Professor Cairo is currently in the Distrito Federal in Mexico on a lecture series, and so he's not here tonight. And I would like to mention that at the sort of behest of the, of the academic senate, we have put together, again, a campus-wide shared governance committee, which is looking at professional development. And we have developed a comprehensive policy, as we have been requested by the accrediting team, and it's currently been passed by the academic senate. It's moving through the shared governance process, and changes and tweaks are being made to it as, as different governance groups are looking at it and asking for things. And so we're hoping to have that in place very soon, and that would be one of the items that was on the list that we can check off right away. And so we're, we're very excited about that. It's a committee that's involving all, a very broad range of people on campus, and I think it will be very effective. So, thank you.
Great, that's very exciting to hear. Thank you. Okay, next we will have, I think it's management association, Dr. Douglas.
Thank you, President Brown. First of all, thanks again for the coming to this MOU in agreement with the district. We really appreciate that. Dr. Levo also asked me to remind you that as part of our ongoing Escalante celebration and event, that tomorrow night at 7 o'clock, there's gonna be a stand-and-deliver play performance in this very room. I'd like to invite you for that. And on Friday, Jay Matthews, who's the Washington Post LA bureau chief, is going to be making a presentation in Westerbeck between 10:00 and 12:00, and he's written a book on Jaime Escalante, so wanted to remind you of both of those.
Well, thank you. So what about the food? I heard there was gonna be food.
Yeah, there's gonna be tamales and churros tomorrow night.
I'm looking forward to some tamales and churros.
Thank you, Dr. Levo, Dr. Douglas for reminding me about that. That's gonna actually be a really great event, and I'll be there for that as well.
I'll be there with my boca. Okay, okay, let's go to classified senate, Ms. Graciela.
Good evening, trustees. So on behalf of the classified senate, we are happy to announce that we have finalized the arrangements for our first town hall meeting, which will be held on Thursday, March 26th, from 12:00 to 1:00 in room C310. I brought the flyer with me tonight. So we do extend an invitation for you to attend and familiarize yourself or find out what's happening or what the concerns are for the classified staff. We're also happy to announce that we opened up our student scholarship online through Academic Works with the help of Chris McPeak in the foundation office, whom we'd like to thank for her assistance. To date, we have received 11 scholarship applications, so we're currently making arrangements and assigning the readers to review those scholarship applications. We're also in the process of planning or awarding an employee scholarship as well, so that's what we're gonna be planning next. And then lastly, we sent out a call for self-nominations for our 2015-16 elections, and we went ahead and extended the deadline to next week, Friday, March 27th. So that is our new deadline for the call for our new senators on classified senate.
Great, thank you. Okay, student association, Ms. Rosco.
Hello. So first of all, thank you so much for approving our dean. I'm really excited to work with Becky. She's really amazing. I had a couple of opportunities to work with her before she left, but I also had a couple of opportunities to work with her outside of here on campus, working student government at the statewide level when she was student affairs advisor at her previous job. She's really great, and I look forward for her leadership here on this campus. It's gonna be great. Secondly, thank you so much for approving our commencement speaker. I look forward to it. I look forward to his speech and to see what, how he will empower our students. So AS board election packets are out now, so we will be having elections in April. So I will be leaving once June gets here, thank God, and moving on to bigger and better things. Yeah, and Marshall too, so we'll be moving on and doing some.
Where are you going?
I have no clue yet. I mean, there's still some schools that are still deciding, so I'm still waiting on San Diego and USC, so we'll see what happens, cross our fingers. But I'll let you know. I will definitely let you know when I know. Other than that, we are faring very well, and we're, we look forward to the joint meeting and in April, so next week, you and me. Date.
All right. Okay, great, that sounds good. So now we'll move on to our trustees. Let's start with trustee Martin, any report?
None, thank you.
Trustee Fellow?
Nothing, thank you.
All right, trustee Mann.
This is going to sound really kind of picky, but I do have a, it's not so much a report but as a suggestion. I don't like to be like the policy monitor, but since Crystal and I do work with the policies, I would like to comment on the agenda for this meeting. Our policy is that if items on the agenda should say the source of it, either the president or the board of trustees, and it should be written as, and if it's an action item, it should be written as an action item. So it was kind of complicated on some of these to figure out what we should do. So for example, 2015 commencement speaker should read, approval, 2015 commencement speaker dash, if the president or the board of trustees is the source of it. That's what our policy is. If we don't like the policy, we can change it, but one of the things we heard from that team is, we really need to follow our policies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mann. We'll look into that.
Go ahead, Dr. Sister. Dr. Sister, whatever.
Okay, on a happier note. So I was at the BOG yesterday and had a chance to witness two very historic events. So one was the approval of the 12 colleges for their baccalaureate. And so, as you know, the pilot is for 15 colleges. So two of the colleges whose proposals got kicked back, one of them was Santa Monica and Rio Hondo, and they both came and gave some very good data and compelling evidence of why they should move forward and what their next steps are going to be. But it does leave open another opportunity for the colleges to come forward if we want to ask for a baccalaureate. And so Chancellor Harris did say that he would be reissuing the RFP to make sure that we had 15 test pilot colleges. So opportunity for us. So the two historic, that was one of the historic events. The other historic event was the 11 HBCUs, so historically black colleges and universities, signed a tag agreement with the California Community Colleges, so transfer guarantee with our students. So I think that was just.
I thought so.
Really outstanding. Then just things that are happening around. So I want to thank PCC for a couple of things. One is for supporting the International Leadership Foundation and 10 students who came for training, and our administrators who came to support that event. I also want to thank PCC for coming to support the adult ed roundtable. We had Dr. Jones come, and they had just finished the hearing at higher ed up in Sacramento. And so I think there was some good information. I hope you all felt that was good information. But certainly, I think there's a lot of work still for the consortiums to do, and some more opportunities for partnership. So under LACST, we are also having, on April 18th, the joint CSCE-LACST sponsored event at East LA College, and that will focus on workforce development. Workforce development was a big topic yesterday's BOG, and one that both our community and business leaders came out to speak about. And so we're going to be sending out a number of messages, so some come from the chancellor's office, the league will be sending out some messages, I'll be formulating some messages to send out. But, you know, I just want to say that I hope all of the trustees get involved in the workforce development initiative. The student success identified what we need to do, and workforce development is going to help identify how we get some of this done, how we redefine completion, success, and the methods by which we define it. And so the LA Chamber of Commerce event that was held here as a town hall was very well-attended. In fact, it was standing room only, and so there's several more town halls and then other follow-up events that will come. So I'll try and keep the trustees advised of that, I keep Dr. Miller advised, and so I encourage you all to be involved, to get your, your business partners, our business partners, our community partners involved, and to make sure that the K-12s also understand that this is something that we have to reach down that past, it's not just at the higher ed level, it's also down in the K-12 level that we need to start initiating some of these, these activities. And then on 4/29, that will be the, the last LACST event of the year, and then we'll have our general elections. But the topic will be Common Core Common Assessment. So the community colleges will be coming in to address the common assessment tool, and we'll have the K-12s come in and address the common core. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Thompson?
No report.
Trustee Salvage?
Report.
Trustee Lewis? Oh my, okay. So I think we are going to move on to our proposed future board business meeting dates, okay? So you're all aware, this one is not a business. So you're all aware, this one is not a business meeting, but let's just announce that this coming Friday and Saturday, we know what we'll be doing and where we'll be, right? Okay, we'll be selecting our next superintendent on Friday at 1:00 and Saturday, starting at 8:00. Okay, so our next Wednesday, our next proposed meeting would be Wednesday, April 1st, Thursday, April, okay, we have a joint meeting at that time. Is that going to be at 6:00 o'clock?
Yeah, yes, it is.
Okay, so we will start at 6:00 with them, so will we be having a closed session or not?
We typically do not have closed sessions on that night, but we could, if we have a need for one, we can schedule it after the joint meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. So on Thursday, April 16, we will be meeting with PUSD. That's Thursday, April 16. Harbison, okay, it's going to be on this campus?
It's going to be on this campus in Harbison Hall. Some may remember Mr. Thompson or others, someone voiced concern about the size of the conference, the president's conference room, so we've secured the Harbison Hall for the event.
Great, I think that's wise. Okay, Wednesday, May 6, will be our regular business meeting. When is commencement?
May 8, I believe.
Okay.
Sorry, is that right?
Yes.
Got it, okay.
Okay, great. And then Wednesday, May 20, would be our business meeting. Okay, so do we have anyone with any future agenda items that they would like to put out?
Yes.
I would like to suggest we put on our agenda review of our ethics policy, although we've done it before. I think it's accreditation team has suggested that all shared governance do bodies, so I think we should review our ethics policy and particularly look at the aspect about what to do when it's violated and how it relates to our protocols.
Okay, thank you. Any other item? Okay. All right, so it appears that...
It's now what?
Hey, it's good times. This meeting is adjourned. We're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.